Join me. Lord, as we near the end of the school year, we thank you for the dedication, patience, and perseverance of our teachers, students, and their families during these difficult last few weeks. We thank you for all the people behind the scenes in our district who are working hard to make things run smoothly. We especially thank you for our senior class of students this year. Please be with them as they prepare to move on to their future endeavors. Let them know that we are celebrating them in all they have accomplished, even though we can't be with them right now. We are grateful that things are slowly getting back to normal. Lord, continue to watch over our community and those that are sick and help them to recover quickly. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. So with that, we'll move into the public board comments. I'll open up if anyone has any comments on the agenda this evening. Okay, with that, we'll move to the next section, the consent agenda.
I'll move for approval.
Thank you.
Mr. Lamb, on the consent agenda, just one thing to note, please. On 3G, that is allowing Lancer BB to apply for a tax credit. And then whatever they receive that tax credit, they're going to donate back to Franklin School. I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. Mr. Sewell, is there anything else to add on that?
No, that's, it's related to tax exemption or a tax credit related to design services for energy efficiency projects. And since Lancer BB did the design work for the Needham project last summer, which included some energy efficiency improvements, they qualify for that. And as Dr. Clendenning said, they have asked us to allocate that tax credit to them, but they do plan to donate it back to the school.
Mr. Lamb, I also wanted to point out, under payment of claims, this looks a little different than it does when we're in person. And that's because the claims one through five that you see are payroll claims. And normally, we present those in person, but since we need electronic signatures, they're attached to the agenda for the virtual meetings.
All right. We have a motion to approve. Does anyone have any questions? Christine, how do you vote? Christie, can you hear me? Yes?
All right, I'm having technical difficulties this evening. I vote yes.
Thank you. Becky?
Aye.
Ryan?
Yes.
Thank you, Clark. And I vote yes, so that motion passes. All right, we'll move into the discussion items. Or, no, sorry, I'm trying to make it quick tonight. We'll move into the superintendent reports.
All right, I think I have the first item.
Yes.
With the budget schedule. Well, believe it or not, it's time to start planning for the 2021 budget. And so you have before you a schedule of what the next few months look like. Probably the dates to focus on. One, as you all know, and I'll talk about later, too, is the delay of income taxes and property taxes from April to, I think it's June for the income tax, and from May to July for the property tax bills. So that will create some issues with our cash flow, and I'll talk about that a little later. But that's on your calendar here. And then we will start the budget workshop on August the 10th, as normal. And then we'll go into a public hearing in September at our regularly scheduled board meeting. And then we will plan to adopt at the October 19th board meeting. So that's pretty much the timeline we were on last year. But I will answer any questions.
So the August public notice, that's new for this cycle again, correct?
The August workshop, we did that last year. And then the notice will go in at the end of August, which it needs to be about 10 days before the public hearing in September. So we've got plenty of time in between.
Okay. But it's what I meant to ask, that public hearing is new. We did that last year for the first time.
For the first time, yes.
And so if Murphy plays heck with us on our schedule with this virus, what is our backup plan? Do we need to worry about that yet?
I don't think so. I'm pretty sure we could do it virtually, just like this.
We can do the workshop virtually, you think?
I think they'll concede to that.
Okay.
If that's the way it needs to be with other schools. And there hasn't been any discussion about that yet, but, you know, we've all had to switch gears pretty quickly lately, so.
Okay.
Mr. Lamb, also, we are starting to look at the forecast, and obviously, we saw that the state of Indiana received substantially less in April. So I've asked Mrs. Gross to kind of give an outline of where we are, and I think also Mrs. Ott asked about potential savings. So Mrs. Gross, could you just give us a brief overview right now, things that you're seeing, and then as you head to the budget, please?
Sure. So we got an April revenue report from the state today. And I hate to start the meeting on this note, but so total revenues in April were 964 million less than what was forecasted. So that's almost 44% less than what it should have been and what budgets were built on. So, and, you know, that is made up of income taxes, sales tax, gambling tax, corporate tax. The bulk of it is individual income tax. With the delays in collecting income tax from April to, I think it's June, the collections were 668 million less than the estimates. Corporate was about 135 million. You know, there was another 50 million lost in gambling, which will never be recovered, at least with the income taxes will be collected at some point. But the sales tax of 103 million, probably not. So, you know, the state is looking at some dire numbers. So eventually, that's going to trickle down to us. So far, the word is that the cuts aren't going to come this year, but I would definitely anticipate them coming in 2021. The themes for the CFO meetings are kind of shifting from the, you know, existing crisis to long-range planning, you know? We've got to start putting forecasts together and start thinking about potential cuts and that kind of thing. So we've kind of shifted focus towards what the next two to six years look like, because it's not, it's not a short-term effect. You know, any hits that we take in the AV have a six-year impact for us. So we have seen a little bit of savings, you know, with overtime and fuel and utilities. Not as much as you would think so far, because we're still paying bills from when we were open. So I think we're going to see the majority of that saving surface more in the summer months. But we are starting to see that. A couple of other areas that we're seeing significant hits is in our, what I call auxiliary revenue accounts. The Performing Arts Center, you know, that's been shut down for several weeks now. Cub Academy, which is our preschool, we obviously haven't been in session, and we ended up having to refund, you know, from March 16th through the end of the school year. Same thing for Cub Care, but we're still paying all of those employees. So, you know, Mr. Mercer had very frugally built up balances in those accounts. And unfortunately, right now, we're kind of eating away at some of that. So I would anticipate us having to make some very tough decisions over the next 18 months or so.
Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Tina on the budget calendar? Thanks, Tina.
You're welcome.
So the next item, we have Michelle to go over the emergency FMLA, also with a interpretive dance. I had to do it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that, I, some of you missed it. I did not do my interpretive dance because I had not been formally trained, like Dr. Clendenning has in dancing. So, as we all saw in a video a few weeks ago from web. So, um, do I need to share my screen?
Yes, if you would like to share your screen, that'd be great.
I don't know how that works.
Okay.
Um, oh, hang on. I mean, I think I do, but, and then I do present.
If you go to present now down at the bottom right, a pop-up screen will appear, and you'll choose that screen.
Hang on, my 11-year-old here is helping me.
Excellent, I appreciate your help, buddy.
With my technology.
So you'll choose present now, and that'll come with a pop-up screen that'll show a little icon of your desktop. And then if you click on that icon, great job.
I'm going to share it.
Good job, Ed.
Can you see it?
Yes.
Okay. So, really quickly, we're going to talk about, just, you know, through some of the basics of this, the new Families First Coronavirus Response Act, and how that might affect us as a district. So just really quick, the FF-CRA provides basically for two different types of paid leave provisions for public employers. The first one being the emergency paid sick leave portion of the act, which provides for up to two weeks of paid sick leave for specific qualifying reasons. And then an additional 10 weeks of paid benefits for employees whose childcare or school has closed or is unavailable due to COVID-19. So this was effective April 1st, 2020, and is in effect through the end of the calendar year, December 31st, 2020. The emergency paid sick leave portion is available to all employees, regardless of how long they have been employed. And the emergency FMLA, the 10 weeks additional, is available to employees who have been employed for at least 30 days with the district. So a little bit different than your traditional FMLA, where the law says that they have to have been employed for at least a year and worked a certain number of hours. This is actually available to any employee. And the potential impact really for us, I feel like, is, you know, we are going to maybe be in a situation where we are paying people for the first two paid sick leave weeks, it's up to 80 hours. And then past that, with the potential for schools being closed, or daycare is being closed, or whatever other form of childcare they had originally planned not being available, those actually might be, we might be looking at paying people for those weeks as well. So the first two weeks is actually fully paid 100% if you are caring for an individual with COVID-19, if you yourself have been diagnosed or under the care of a doctor for COVID-19, and/or caring for, or, you know, under your doctor's orders to not go to work, those kinds of things. That if your childcare is closed for the first two weeks, you're, we have to pay 2/3 of their regular weekly rate. And same for the additional 10 weeks of the emergency FMLA, that's paid out at 2/3 of their weekly wage, weekly wages. So I feel like the key to this is that they say that, you know, the employee has to be unable to work, to be eligible, and also unable to telework. So, you know, really having those back-and-forth interactive dialogues with employees and discussing how we can best kind of work together in those scenarios to do what's best for both parties. So that's kind of very, very high level. Does anybody have questions?
Michelle, Andy, does our calendar with the three days on, two days off, does that help or hurt this situation or not?
Well, in our present situation, because we're currently paying everyone, it really probably has not been an issue up to this point.
Okay.
Because we've said, you know, work from home, if your position isn't able to work from home, we're still, we're still paying you through the end of the school year, through your regularly scheduled work schedule. So I think that we'll see the impact possibly when we get back into a situation where we are asking people to come into the buildings. And they maybe don't have that childcare option, or their doctor has said, you know, you're in a particularly vulnerable population, and maybe going to work isn't the best option for you. I think that that's when we might start seeing that, seeing some of those requests come in.
Okay.
And Michelle, could you give us the dates again, when this became effective, and when will it terminate?
April 1st through December 31st. And it is not retroactive. So if anybody had asked for a leave for those types of purposes before April 1st, it does not fall under these guidelines.
And as far as documentation, how will we keep track for your records as well as for the business office? What are some thoughts there for the board to know?
Sure. So we've, Tina and I have worked very closely together to develop policy and some processes and procedures with the help of J-Ae Benefits and some of their guidance, too. And we've also, through that, created forms to allow people to ask for the leave. Required documentation, most of the legal guidance is really suggesting that you, that we maintain documentation for, I believe, at least four years under this. And so we would ask for, you know, documentation from physicians. If they are requesting leave because their daycare is closed, we would ask for documentation that their daycare is indeed closed. The law actually does say that, you know, if they have alternative childcare, you know, that we have to, they have to actually be able to prove that there's nobody else maybe in the household that could care for a child. And so we would maintain the forms, along with the documentation, for up to four years. And we typically maintain documents a lot longer than that. There is a intermittent leave option, too. So if we were in a situation at any point where we were maybe asking folks to come in two days a week and then work from home the other two days, and those two days that, you know, they couldn't come in and work actually in the office or in the buildings, we would actually have to count those intermittent leave days. So definitely a lot of record-keeping and maintaining that, those hours and that documentation.
And financially, this could have a huge impact on our substitute teacher budget. You know, if we're paying someone to be out for 12 weeks and then paying a substitute on top of that, that could be huge.
And I think that's, you know, I think that's where having those conversations can kind of maybe minimize our exposure to this a little bit, and kind of working with the employees and saying, okay, is it a situation where you can work from home? Is that something that we can work out? Can we look at an intermittent status where you could maybe switch off with, you know, somebody else in the household to, you know, watch the children, you know, two days a week or something? And so really, really having an interactive dialogue with the employee and making, coming up with something that really is beneficial for both parties will hopefully minimize the impact a little bit. But yes, and the other thing, too, just as an aside, this is not in addition to regular FMLA that's already in place. And so if they were to take the entire 12 weeks, the first two weeks of emergency paid sick leave, and then the 10 weeks of the emergency FMLA, that would be their entire 12 weeks allotment for FMLA during what we consider to be, our year is actually our calendar year, January 1 through December 31st. So they would not be then eligible for job protective leave, an additional 12 weeks for an additional FMLA type of reason. So they may consider that also as they look at using the time.
All right, any other questions for Michelle?
Michelle, thank you for researching. I know you've reached out to Tara Sisko from Ice Miller, and you've had a lot of conversation with her. I want to thank Ice Miller, another good partner with us. But you, great, great job on your part.
Yeah, thank you, Michelle.
Saying his name is phenomenal.
You what?
You did a great job.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
All right, we'll move into the next section of the agenda for the action items. Dr. Worland, you were up for the first item, the 5 through 12 textbook adoption.
Yes, Mr. Lamb, thank you. Again, we talked about this last week, had a great question about the 5 through 8 novel canon. Just as a reminder, we are using a core group of those books consistently across the grade level, and then did allow for some teacher freedom, which is why you will see some grades have more novels in 5 through 8. But that entire canon is there for you for their novel-based ELA adoption. Mr. Lamb, do you want me to go through all four?
If there were no changes from just two weeks ago, I would say no unless anyone else on the board has questions or wants a review.
Okay, there are no changes from the April meeting on those four.
Okay, with that, do I have a motion?
I will move, this is Christine, I'll move to approve the 5 through 12 ELA textbook adoption.
Thank you, Christine.
As it was read last time.
Okay, Becky, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ryan? Clark?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so the motion passes. We'll move to the next item, the 5 through 12 rental and fees update.
Thank you again, Mr. Lamb, thanks, everyone. Yes, there are no changes. You will see at the April meeting, you approved K through 4. This is the 5 through 12 version. CBIS is at the top. The bulk of the changes are connected to the adoption. You will also see the updated Chromebook fees and some Prodigy Leadaway updates. There are no changes from the April meeting.
Thank you. Any questions for Brooke? I have a motion?
This is Becky, I move for approval.
Thank you, Becky. That, Christie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Ryan? Clark?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Move to the web HVAC proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. After, following Lancer BB's feasibility study and facility condition analysis, one of the things I asked Mr. Lancer to assist us with is the heating and air conditioning system at Webb Elementary. To assist us even further, we consulted with Mr. Durkin, and both Mr. Lancer and Mr. Durkin are on this call and could take questions from you if you have any. But in short, the Webb Elementary is quite, getting quite well-seasoned, and it's in need of some investments in the HVAC system. Mr. Durkin has made a proposal that will help us to address the air exchange rates in the building that were designed to an earlier standard, and do that in a way that I feel is smart and cost-effective. The proposal, we put before you, the preliminary estimate for that work is $260,000. Mr. Lancer has proposed a professional fee of $30,000 associated with that work. In short, that, what that proposal entails is installing a 100% outside air HVAC unit on the gymnasium, and then using ducting from the gymnasium into the classrooms, drawing that air into the classrooms to achieve additional fresh air exchanges in the classrooms. So that is, that is the basics of the proposal. Mr. Durkin and I have also spoken about an alternative approach where we would see if the existing units would be able to provide enough outside air to satisfy that air exchange rate without adding the new unit. And so both of those are on the table. The assured approach would be a new unit that could then be repurposed in the future, either in a renovation of that building, or it could even be moved to an alternate building if the opportunity arose in the future. So with that, my recommendation, since time is short, to begin work on that project this summer, would appreciate your consideration of that request and consider approving it this evening.
So, Mr. Sewell, I, as I read the proposal that's posted on the agenda, the one concern I had was your caveat about the weight of the new unit, and whether the loading could handle, or the roof could handle that. And so the question I have, is there any, because of the financial environment that we're in, with the unknown times, is there any testing? Is there any work that we can do to verify that, to kind of close that unknown, that we can really, I'd hate to approve this and then have another $150,000 worth of structural work that needs to be done. And, you know, we're going to be, we're going to have to look at all of our pennies right now. So is there any testing that we can do, or any evaluations that we can alleviate some of that concern?
That is, that's a great question. Mr. Durkin has reviewed the facility plans and has some locations on the roof in mind, where if there isn't already load-bearing support right there, the block wall structure is within a short distance of that and could be easily retrofitted to remedy that load issue. So that, I believe, is what is reflected in the contingency amount that Mr. Lancer recommended in his proposal.
Okay.
Of course, you know, until we get in there with a design and see the specifics of that, there's always a possibility of having to revisit that issue, but we believe that was accounted for in the proposal.
And I understand, you know, Mr. Lancer having that variant in there for the backup, it was just such a large number, that 10 to 25% at this time. And, you know, if we could do our due diligence to reduce that, right, it would be And, you know, if we could do our due diligence to reduce that, right, it would be better.
Absolutely.
But I understand the constraint, so.
Yep.
Does anyone have?
The other thing that, oh, go ahead. That I, the piece of information that I didn't have, that Mr. Durkin and I spoke this evening, was the, the new HVAC unit lead time is 12 weeks. So that puts us into September before we're building that. But the other work, the duct work and utilizing the existing air handler to accomplish essentially the same thing would allow us to do a little bit of a test run of that as well. Now, of course, once we order a piece of equipment, we're going to be obligated to follow through with that. But we are, we have some good, I really feel good about this proposal. I think it offers us some flexibility and is a good solution to a reasonable investment in this building as we look to the long range needs of the corporation in the coming years.
Absolutely, thank you. Is there any other questions for, for Sewell? Do I have a motion for this action item?
I will, this is Christine, I'll move for approval.
Thank you, Christie. Becky, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ryan and Clark?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so the motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Sewell.
Thank you.
Mr. Lancer, thanks for joining tonight.
We will be using GeoBond dollars that were already allocated for this. You want to talk about that, Mr. Sewell, just summarize that for us, please?
Yeah, we, we'll have to kind of take a different look at how we're going to spend GeoBond dollars because there'll be some things that'll have to fall off in order to replace it with this. But under the circumstances, I believe it's the priority.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Move on to the next item, the CARES Act proposal and application. Ms. Gross? Tina, you're on mute. This is a secret project.
Yes. All right, can everybody see my screen now?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't think these dollar amounts have changed since the last time we discussed this. Our estimated allocation is about $443,000. We have to allocate some of that to St. Rose and that formula is based on enrollment. And we also have recently learned that we may have another non-public that has, has rights to a portion of this money as well. Dr. Worland is going to reach out to Kid City. They have a kindergarten program. So they may have, they may have the rights to a few thousand dollars of this. But for the most part, we're working, looking at about $428,000. So last month or a couple of weeks ago at the last board meeting, we presented a potential plan. And if you recall, it had classroom assistants. It had a couple of permanent substitute teachers. It had tutors. It had a social worker in there. And after much discussion with our teachers, FCTA, and the building reps, the consistent theme among everyone was we need more hands in the classroom. So we backed away from some of those other positions and just really focused on bringing assistance into the classrooms that would make an impact to both, more importantly, students, but also take some of the stress off of our teachers. So as you can see, we're proposing a flat rate of $75 a day for those positions. We're calling them CARES Act assistants because they are temporary, one-year positions. And so each of those would cost us about $13,500 each. And the number next to the building name would be the number of positions that those buildings would get. So as you can see in the original proposal, we didn't have classroom assistants for the middle school and high school. But feedback from those groups indicated that the classroom assistants are needing, needed at the secondary level as well. So that would be a total of, I think it was 16 or, no, it was up to 20 some.
24.
24 positions for a total of $310,500. We've incurred about $15,000 or will, by the time it's over, investment in hotspots for our students. So if we allocate that expense to the CARES Act funding, that would bring us to about $325,000 with a remaining balance of about $100,000. And we stopped there knowing that we may have some more expenses come up out of the COVID era and wanted to hold back some funds for any surprise expenses or if we want to carry some of these positions into a second year. Just providing a cushion for this, for this surprise funding. We, Brooke and I have been attending webinars once a week on allowable expenses. I for the, we'll have to report on an ongoing basis. It's just like some of the grants that we already have in place. So the application has opened up, so we will work to apply for that funding as soon as possible. And I believe it'll be set up on a reimbursement basis like many of our other grants.
So is there a risk to go out and fill 24 positions? Is there a risk that the funding won't show up?
No, I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
It's been very public and, you know, lots of structure. It changes every day, it seems like, but there's lots of structure around it.
Good.
Tina, this is Christie, is there a time limit that we have? I forget to spend that, that money once we get it?
Yes, it's 2022.
Okay, thank you.
One of the stressors inside of this allocation is we receive the money based on our Title I funding. Then they shift it and now we have to allocate it based on total enrollment. And that's one of the things that you're seeing, I think the National School Board, I think weighed in as well as teachers' unions and the AA SA because that actually is not what's written into the law. So the law says we have to be equitable. And equitable provides us based on Title I. So when Dr. Worland is presenting the other grants to St. Rose, we have to make sure they get it based on their Title I. So that's one of the significant issues right here in this grant. So we may see some dollars leave us as, as Ms. Gross just articulated quite well. But we, that's going to be up in the air. I do not believe that it's going to hinder us from moving forward the plan. I think the collaboration that we exhibited with our teachers, Tina and Brooke are outstanding thinkers on this. And so it's a, it's a good plan for Franklin schools and it will provide safety. And most importantly, it's going to help kids. We had a lot of other things in there to help kids, but this one is going to help kids. And that's what we're trying to do with these positions.
All right, any questions for Tina? Do I have a motion on this item then?
This is Becky, I move for approval.
Thank you, Becky. Christie, how do you vote?
Vote yes.
Thank you, Ryan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so the motion passes, thank you, Tina. Last item under the action items is our graduation on July 18th.
Yeah, just to remind you, this is just actually impacting the calendar. Since we vote on the calendar, we are asking for approval of graduation on July the 18th. One thing I would like to add is that Mr. Ray House and I spoke early today. Right now, we're looking to go outside. It's probably going to be the safest opportunity for us to get maximum number of people available. With that, we would propose that the 19th be the rain date for everyone. And if we can get inside and everything works to get as many people possible, great. But we want moms and dads and family to be able to experience this as well in this significant milestone of graduation. So the 18th is the date that we're asking for approval. But just so everybody knows, the 19th would be our rain date if something happens.
All right. I have a motion for this action item.
This is Christine, I'll move for approval.
Thank you, Christie. Becky, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And then, yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to the discussion items. First up is the handbooks for 2020 and 2021.
I can go ahead and take those, Mr. Lamb, if that's okay. Handbooks for this year are CBIS in the middle school. You will see there, they've submitted, both Mrs. Moran and Mrs. Holman have submitted their handbook in addition to the summary of the changes, similarly to the other handbooks we've looked at. CBIS, Mr. Herbin and Mrs. Moran have been focused this year on their, their discipline practices, their PBIS systems. And you will see that the majority of the changes in their proposal center around those procedures and those policies. So those changes are in there. You'll see different samples of materials when you look at that. For the middle school, they have minor changes. I will tell you personally, I was excited to see that some of their changes reflect some of the work Kim has been doing with the principals, the counselors, the assistant principals, some of the conversations that we've had with regarding mental health and behavior plans for students and social emotional wellbeing. So you'll see some of that theme in the middle school handbook. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know if it's related to mental health, Kim's happy to answer questions as well.
Any questions for Brooke? Nice job on the summary, though. Thanks for pulling that together.
Yeah, the principals did an excellent job. It's really helpful, I think. And thanks to Kim, too, for her partnership through the year, throughout the year, too.
All right, if there's no questions, we'll move to the next item, the rainy day transfer in June. Ms. Gross?
So this is an item I just kind of wanted to prepare the board for, for next month. As you recall, we have two big tax draws each year, one in June and one in December. Much of those property taxes that we collect go to parent debt service and, and fund our operating funds. So the delay in the due date for property taxes affects us in a big way. If, if the property taxes aren't due until 60 days after that May date, then we don't get as big a draw in June as what we've planned on or used to. So taking each of the funds, our debt service, we have quite a bit of savings in that fund that has built up over the years. So we should be fine there. We can, we can cover that delay in, in tax draw in that fund. The operating fund, we're going to be really close. Tammy and I crunched numbers this afternoon and we think we're going to be about $8,500 in the, in the black, which is cutting it very close, but, but it is, it is going to be very close. And the referendum is where we, we really go into the red on. The revenue deferred in, in that account, is it going to be about a million dollars? We will eventually collect that in July and August, but at the end of June, we'll be about $750,000 in the red. And we can't, June 30th is a pivotal date, too. We can't be in the red on June 30th. We can't be in the red on June 30th or December 31st. So those are big dates in the finance world. So we looked at some borrowing options that some of the schools are taking advantage of. But in looking at our funds, at least for the June date, we should be able to cover it if we just transfer rainy day funds over for a short period of time and then transfer them back after we collect those taxes. So I feel like that's a better option for now. If, if they do this again for the December property tax due date, we may have to look at other options. But my recommendation is we cover this one with rainy day funds for a short period of time. We're not earning any interest right now anyway. So we can cover that deficit and then transfer it right back once we collect all of the taxes in August. We've also factored in a, a 10% non-collectible property tax because we fear that we, we, even when it becomes due, some people aren't going to be able to pay their taxes. So I think we've put together some conservative numbers for that. And, you know, it's hard to gauge. It's, it's early in the economic crisis of all this, so it's hard, it's hard to gauge when money's going to come in and, you know, how much of it will be uncollectible. The, one point to make is the county auditor, so the, the delay in taxes is for non-escrow accounts, okay? So if you've got a mortgage and you're paying property taxes into an escrow, those are all due in May. But only 33 and a half percent of our property taxes are escrowed accounts. So we could be delayed two-thirds of our normal property taxes because of that. Does that make sense? That's a lot to absorb. Sorry to have to get down into the weeds.
Any questions for Tina on that? So Tina, if we wait for the June date, does that give you enough time? If June is a critical month, does it give you enough time to make the necessary changes?
Yes, if we wait until June, I'll have a more accurate number for you to be able to approve.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and one, one other thing. I did learn earlier this year that we're allowed to collect property, 90% of property taxes as they come in. So I just had to write a memo to the county auditor requesting monthly distributions of those. So that's helped our cash flow, too, because we're now getting, we're collecting property taxes every month. Whatever they've collected, we can, we can receive 90% of that.
Where'd it go? Find that out, yeah. Okay, move into the next item, the adjustments to the first Okay, moving to the next item, the adjustments to the first grade textbook rental and K4 technology fees.
Yes, I will go ahead and start. It may be a team effort here. This has been a conversation among the admin team. We're having conversations about at-home learning and the situation that we're in, and the situation we could potentially be in in the fall and what that means for our students with regards to access, which has actually been a conversation at state level as well. Part of our access situation involves our first graders and our kindergarteners. And so we've had conversations about how do we start thinking about ensuring K through 4 all have Chromebooks in the event we find ourselves in an ongoing situation. And we've brainstormed a lot of options. One of them that we're discussing, and that's why we added as a discussion item, is the opportunity for our students in first grade, starting in first, first through fourth, to do the same thing our fifth graders do, fifth through eighth graders do, and the same thing our ninth through 12th graders do. And that's add that fee to our textbook rental, starting in first grade this year. And then Matt, you may have to talk about the rotations and access for our kindergarteners and how that would be impacted. But that's the discussion item that we're bringing to the meeting, is the addition of that textbook rental fee for first grade. In addition, and that would be the only grade impacted this year for the next four years for that grade level. And then also, we currently have a technology fee for our GoGuardian software, which allows our teachers to monitor our devices to ensure that we know what's happening with our devices and in our classrooms. That fee is currently applied to textbook rental 5 through 12. We are considering or would like to discuss the possibility of implementing that fee across K through 12. It's $8.54. Matt, if I misspoke here, make sure that I'm correct. Correct me. So that's where we stand. Matt, I don't know if you have anything to add. Tina from your end, or Dr. Clendending from your end.
A quick insert on the kindergarten. When we teamed up with the RDC, we proposed that these Chromebooks last three years. And that's what we had proposed to the RDC and they agreed to. We are actually on some devices lasting five years. And when I say lasting, they're on their last leg. As we discussed at our central office admin meeting, how can we meet the teacher's request of being able to provide technology for the younger grade levels? Obviously, a kindergartner is not going to do as much on a Chromebook as a 12th grader. So as we look at extending the life expectancy of these to five years and expecting that, it made sense for kindergarten to get those older Chromebooks. As Brooke dutely stated, grades 1 through 4 is four grade levels. When a fifth grader gets it, they use it 5 through 8, which is another 5, 6, 7, 8, four years. And then as students get it, 9 through 12, that's another four years. During, and part of that, part of that comes back to keep other Chromebooks alive. Part of that will also be to go down to kindergarten so that they, so that textbook rental isn't charged there. They'll just continue to get fifth grade Chromebooks. I do have a state, we do have somewhat of a safety net in place. We're going to modify the rotation based on this. In the past, we've tried to keep the new Chromebooks in the teachers' hands and that will no longer take place. But having said that, if we are wrong about the Chromebooks lasting five years, we have the safety net of being able to buy Chromebooks for the teachers and staff, which equate to the same number of Chromebooks we would need for kindergarten. So if we happen to be wrong, which you always plan for the best, or plan for the worst, if we happen to be wrong, we've got that way out.
And Matt, to clarify, we currently have one-to-one second through 12th grade, correct?
That is correct.
So we're trying to address some of where we are with first grade and kindergarten at this point. In addition to your Chromebooks that are lasting five years, or that were in the fifth year.
And what's the added fee for the first grade?
Oh, great question. I may not have shared it.
You said $8 for something. I don't know if that's total or if that's just a piece of it.
Yep, nope, that was a piece of it. I'm so glad you asked that question. So it's $94.19, Ryan. So that's a great question for that first grade. And then the other component that you just noted was that K through, this would be K through 12. It's already in the 5 through 12 textbook adoption proposals. The $8.54, that's for the technology fee so that we can monitor what's happening on devices. Thank you.
The only thing I would add is that I think as we look to the future, we want to make sure all of our kids get the opportunity to be engaged in it. We do see a hole in this issue. You know, if we could see the future and know that it's only going to be a short term and we're going to all come to school, we wouldn't do this. And this is why it's a discussion item also tonight. You just, we want you to think about it. We want to get communication out to the parents if it's forecasting that we're trending this way to do this, so we don't surprise anybody. One thing that will have an impact is, as you all know, we're about 42% free and reduced lunch. And those students obviously would not pay based on that status. But we would apply for that money back in textbook rental collection from the state. And then the missing piece, the dollar amount between the textbook rental and the cost of the Chromebooks would be added to debt service the following year. So that we would be made whole in the purchase of the Chromebooks. So it's not as a simple one-to-one, mom and dad are going to pay us $94. So that's the other thing that we need to look at. And therefore, circuit breaker would have some impact potentially on this. Even though debt service can be fully covered, but as you all know, that continues to play out in a lot of different ways along the road for parents and what they pay us. So I wanted to make sure everybody's clearly aware of our ask and thoughts.
I just have one question. So the $94.19 will be for first graders, fifth graders, and ninth graders?
No. Can I take this one, Brooke? You'll notice that fifth grade and freshmen, I believe the fee is $4 higher. This Chromebook, they continue to update it every five to six months. The price changed between when we bought them for fifth and ninth grade to when we buy them for the quote, most recent quote. They increased the processor speed and they increased the price by like $12. So as we go from year to year, and obviously this time, between three months, the price went up $12 because they improved the product. And that won't be uncommon at all, Christie.
Okay. So that $94.19, those first graders are going to be locked into that for four years, correct? Okay.
Correct. Yep. Christie, if you want the exact number, the number that we had on the textbook rental for fifth and ninth that you just adopted, Matt, that Matt just referenced, was $91.69.
Okay.
And we only have eighth grade and the incoming 12th graders, right Matt, that are not paying for Chromebooks at this point?
That is correct. Through textbook rental.
Right. Okay. Alright, thank you.
And David, that's because we're still part of the RDC?
That's correct.
And that's at the secondary, not elementary.
Right, any other questions for Brooke? We'll move to the last discussion item, the policy authorizing collection of our attorney fees.
Yeah, over the past couple of weeks, we've had a conversation that if we're able to collect fees, and so Mr. Wagner and I believe Mr. Young have talked about this. I'm going to ask Mr. Young to present an overview of this first reading of the policy, please.
Thank you, Dr. Clendending. Yes, the issue before you tonight with this agenda item is that from time to time, third parties, those are non-school employees, cause damage to our property through negligent acts or omissions. When this occurred, occurs, the school corporation is legally entitled to recover those damages. Typically, it's the cost of repairs and/or replacement of the property. And that's recovered from the wrongdoer. Now, most of the time, the matter is settled with the insurance company providing insurance coverage to the person who caused the damage. And usually, that's not much of an issue. Normally, insurance companies are very cooperative and they just pay for the damage based upon estimates of reasonable cost of repair. However, sometimes insurance companies offer an insufficient amount. Because they know that if the corporation has to file suit to collect its damages, the corporation will incur additional costs, which are attorney's fees. In connection with that suit and under current law, those fees are not recoverable as additional damages. So that even if the school corporation recovers 100% of its damages, its net recovery is inadequate because of the fees that must be paid. So the insurance company offers a lesser amount. Knowing that in the end, even if 100% recovery is obtained through litigation, the corporation will net the lesser amount. And also knowing that the corporation doesn't want to wait the weeks or the months that it takes to resolve claims through litigation, only to receive that which the insurance company was offering at the beginning, a discounted amount. Excuse me. The resolution and the policy that it creates addresses this unjust situation. The policy provides that if the school corporation is required to sue to recover its damages, that the corporation may also recover its reasonable attorney's fees and court costs. And the court costs are the filing fees. This is a very novel policy and as far as I know, unprecedented. However, I believe that the law granting home rule powers to schools allows the corporation to adopt and enforce this policy. The specific statutory authority found in the home rule law and the reasoning concluding that home rule allows the adoption of this policy is set forth in detail in the resolution that you have before you. And I'm not going to link in the presentation by going through the statutory analysis as it is all contained in that resolution, though I'd be happy to answer any specific questions the board may have. As I stated, I can find no precedent for this policy, but I can easily make a good faith argument in support of the legality of the policy if called upon to do so by a court in any case in which FCSC has filed suit to recover damages to property together with its attorney's fees. I recommend that you adopt this policy tonight on first reading. Are there any questions?
Roger, this is Andy. No question, but again, thank you for researching this topic and coming up with this proposal.
Well, it's worth a try at this point. Not, no, you know, no try, no gain, but there's no harm in trying.
So for the other board members, any questions for Roger?
No.
Alright, thank you Roger.
You're welcome, thank you.
So we'll move to the next agenda item, the board administrative comments. I'll open up for the board if there's any comments tonight.
Did he want us to move that to an action item?
I'm sorry, on the policy? No, no, our internal rules require us to consider this on one reading and adopt on a second reading.
Oh, okay, thanks.
And I see no reason to suspend the rules in order to run this through tonight. There's no harm in waiting to do final adoption at the June meeting.
Very good.
Okay.
Any other board comments? Dr. Clendending, I'll open up for you.
A couple of things. One, I think everyone has had a chance to see the news, but we did lose a very dear teacher at the start of the week. And we also did name her the FCSC Teacher of the Year this year. Karen Cheek did pass away. There is a scholarship fund that's being set up and their family has asked in lieu of flowers, whatever, if they want to donate to that, they could do that. And we'll have that information available. But she was a dear teacher, really had her heart for middle school kids. And she was also helping foreign exchange students as they would come over and they would live in their house and get the experience of going to school. And then she actually, two of the boys living with them right now, she's fully embraced them longer than the normal year. So she's just a special person and I wanted just to make note of that to the board and to the public, that we did lose a great educator and a dear person and a friend this week. Also, we will be having the parade for seniors on May the 23rd, beginning at 10 a.m. We're going to begin at the fairgrounds. I did contact Mr. Young with the executive order 16, saying all facilities close until June 30th. That prohibited us from staging on the high school property because of the volume of kids. We were able to get approval from the county commissioners to use the fairgrounds. So we will enter in the fairgrounds and exit onto Jefferson Street and then go down Jefferson to Eastview Drive. And then it's going to terminate on Graham Road and Commerce. That's where it's going to stop. And so that one, to make sure everybody knew the play route, we are requiring a recommendation. People wear masks as they come out, as well as keep social distancing, but please come out and, you know, congratulate the seniors. And Mr. Ray House has worked with Chief Cochrane and the mayor's office to designate parking areas as well as places to stand and watch the parade. So I wanted to make sure everybody knew of the parade, starting at 10 o'clock on May the 23rd. Also, on May 14th of this week, the seniors are picking up their caps and gowns. And that will take place in orderly fashion. Mr. Sewell has helped with distribution and safety requirements. This is an essential skill, an essential part of our education. So we will be using the high school PAC parking lot at this time for that. In addition, we're giving all the seniors a yard sign congratulating them on behalf of the school district, and they're going to pick that up on the 14th as well. Those were delivered this weekend. And then we've now transported them up to the high school or they're en route to the high school. So those are two graduation items I want you to be aware of.
Thank you for sharing that. Okay, we'll move to the calendar agenda item. Dr. Clendending?
Yeah, just, we are having last day of school, May 13th, and teachers finish up on the 22nd. Dr. Warland has arranged for several days of virtual professional development for people. And that will be a very good experience. We're also asking all support staff and certified teachers to complete their 2021 requirements for their licensure and job to be completed in the next two weeks, so that we don't have to have that delay and as we come back to school, have that checked off. But the kid's last day is May 13th. Mr. Lamb, you and I need to get together on a calendar date for July. Hopefully, we'll be able to be together for that board retreat, looking at goals, strategic plans, and looking ahead. Obviously, Ms. Gross will probably be a keynote speaker there as we talk about budgets on that retreat, because she's going to have a lot of work. And as you can see, she's done this great job right now. She's had two really great years, last year and then this year, budgeting all the projects and everything. But she's done a great job. We need to get together on that July date. And we know the graduation is now the 18th. Those are all the calendar reviews at this time.
Alright, thank you. Moving into the last agenda item, I'll open up for public comments. Have anything, please state your name and I'll allow you two minutes for that topic. No? No? So with that, we will close the meeting and I wish everyone a great evening and be safe and we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy.
Thanks.